So, no, I'm just letting you know, I mean, this is a, this is a, um, yeah, a meeting. But for us, this is a special call meeting, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order and I can't because I only have three. Um, oh, now I have four, there I, now I've got it for them, alright. So, I will call the special call meeting of the mayor.
And you have, you have five calls.
I've never gotten them.
That's true, I forgot, okay. So, we're all, yes, thank you all, the Carver, I apologize for forgetting about you. We're all milling about right now, so we're gonna get all settled in here, but for the time being, we are on Facebook Live. I will call the meeting of the mayor and the board of Alderman, this is a special call, and in accordance with provisions of section twenty-one dash three dash twenty-one of the Mississippi Code annotated as amended, uh, we gave notice of the special call, and we are now meeting Friday, 2022, at ten o'clock, second floor conference room. Specific subject of the meeting is a concurrent work session with Octobah County Board of Supervisors to discuss possible joint capital projects and other opportunities for partnering. So, this was all executed, and we have in attendance, uh, Alderman Carver is on the phone, Alderman Sistrunk is here, Alderman Brooks is here, Vice Mayor Perkins is here, Alderman Beatty is here, Alderman, um, Henry Vaughn will not be with us, and Alderman Rupp will not be with us. And we have in, in attendance also supervisors, we have the President of the Board Supervisor, Brickley Miller, and we have Delois Farmer, who is the official, the administrator, right, county administrator, I'm sorry, I started to say CAO, and that's certainly not correct. And we have, um, the attorney, county attorney, Representative Rob Roberson. And so, uh, the, the goal was, because y'all had talked about this, um, to have an opportunity for us to discuss where we can partner in various and sundry things. And part of what came up, I think at your board meeting, or your last board meeting, perhaps the one before, I'm not sure, but, uh, is talking about partnering on, like, Hospital Road, partnering on Garrett Road, which has been, uh, approved, I believe, and, and budgeted from both your standpoint and, and our standpoint, and then partnering on Collier Road and other perhaps opportunities. And so, that was part of what we wanted to discuss. And so, um, who we got, oh, there you are, come on in. And now Supervisor Trainer is with us, so we have, um, we are, we are Facebook Lives, just, just so you know, and so I was just kind of giving the, the rough, um, background of us getting together to talk about where we have opportunities to partner and kind of what generated this. And I was gonna say that y'all have, uh, talked about this in your board meetings, um, about how we can partner in some of the ways that we have. And I, I just made a list, and just, um, of the things that we've already done over the years, we partnered with the library, the Humane Society, the museum, we've partnered on tap grants, um, we partnered at the airport, we partnered at the landfill, and I will give you an update on that. Um, we partnered with North Star, we've done Streets and Ditches, in particular, South Montgomery and some of the ditches down in there, um, and the Tiff Projects, and also, um, mosquito spraying, so, and there may be some others out there I've forgotten, but those are the, kind of a rough list of all, all the ways we, we have partnered in the past. And I think there's a really nice, you know, opportunity for us to partner in, in other ways going forward. And, and the reason for the discussion now is because we do have, um, projects that are potential for us partnering, so, um, Hospital Road being one of them, and Collier Road and other roads. I think Supervisor Trainer is interested in, um, Rock Hill Road, is that right Supervisor?
Right, right. And also, uh, since annexation is, is, is official, we're gonna have to look at Old Mayhew and possibly Bardwell.
Okay.
So, that brings a different little dynamic involved in it.
By the way, Poorhouse Road looks good.
Oh, good.
Man, it looks good.
And, um...
And I had one of my constituents over there told me he wanted his road over Mayhew and Bardwell, it looked like Poorhouse.
Poorhouse looks good.
I had to tell him that was about a two-point, what, million dollar?
Yeah, one point seven this term and about five hundred thousand last term for base repairs, so.
Okay, alright, so Old Mayhew and Bardwell is another, um, and, um, Rock Hill Road, so, you know, some of those, some of those things that we can begin to talk about and filter in, and then, I was fairly broad in our call for the, for the meeting, because I said other opportunities for partnering. And, um, I think, you know, paving is certainly one of them, that we do have some history of doing, and then, uh, even, uh, parks, opportunities, potential opportunities there that we can explore over the coming years, um, of how we might be able to do that. So, I just thought it would be good for us to kind of sit around and, and discuss that as, as how we would go about that and when we might actually be able to manage putting those things, uh, in place as we go through, our, you know, as the city goes through its capital projects. I know y'all, at least I don't know y'all for sure, but I think you've discussed how you're gonna use your ARPA funds, um, and, and I don't know what you, what you've settled on, but I think there's some water infrastructure opportunities as well that, um, Mr. Kemp, um, Mr. Edward Kemp, who is now our Utilities Director, has, uh, discussed with, with John, Supervisor Montgomery, and with Supervisor Williams, and Supervisor Trainer, uh, about, um, oh, West Point Road, down in the Deerfield area, and out in the Bluefield area, where some of those lines are in need of replacement and repair. So, I think there may be some, some opportunities there that we can look at, so, um, and I'm, I'm happy to throw it open again, this is a work session, so if anyone has anything in particular that they wanna talk about, Supervisor Miller?
I would just say that, um, we've actually officially started more on the drainage cleanout for the creeks, and that ultimately is gonna help the, the flooding issues that even affect the city. Um, so we have gotten all of the clearance for the ones off of, uh, around, around South Montgomery and Poorhouse, um, so we're gonna start that process, and there's some in some other districts as well, um, that I know of, and that's really gonna help Skinner and some of those creeks that are backing up. Uh, I know, two winters ago, we even saw when we had the really bad floods, even it backed up as far as Academy Road, and we've never had that before. Um, and that's simply the construction that's happening, you know, the building, and there's another subdivision that's about to go in on Poorhouse Road, uh, as well, um, on the other end, so the more we continue to develop, that's something that the county's really looking at, making sure that that water, that we can get it out of those areas, because, you know, when it was rural before, um, it could spread out and it had things to slow it down, you know, the landscaping to slow it down. Now, it's all being funneled into a creeks, you know, these creeks, and they're not being able to handle them, so we have started on that process. So, um, we have all of the easements in the right of way, and Todd Baby, we should see some, um, some action on that really soon, um, so I know that that's something that's really been a, an issue in the areas flooding.
In, in reading the paper, did I see correctly that y'all are looking at doing some, not zoning so much, but some planning?
We're going to have to do that because of the growth of the county. Uh, one of my biggest concerns every day, and I'm glad that we have the attorneys here, because a lot of this is on policy. What policy can the city and the county get that could make it easier for us to work with? Every time we get ready to do something, we gotta do an interlocal agreement. We gotta go through a lot of red tape to get things done. If we could determine some type of relationship, and I hate to throw it out there, and I've always said before, I really think the city and the county ought to be a helpful side of the government.
We've talked about that.
If we really wanna, if we really wanna reach our full potential, we need to really look at that. Now, I know that's, that's, that's a major bite, but getting back to what I was saying, there's got to be a way to where we can come up with some type of arrangement, to where when we have these little things done, we don't have to go through an act of Congress, have to go back to the legislature to get all this approval, go through all this red tape, we can just get whatever done that we need to have done.
We've contracted, have we not, on a number of things?
We have, and we've done it through interlocal.
Yeah.
There are two ways to operate Supervisor Trainer, as you well know, one is the full-blown interlocal agreement process, and that takes time.
But that's on every item, right?
You have to do it on every item, if you wanted to go that route, that's the key, and, and you send it down to the AG's office, and sometimes they give you a quick turnaround on blessing that, and sometimes it drags. So, the other way we were thinking about doing, and recently on some of the projects y'all are kicking around now, Garrett Road was an example, is that you guys move under your processes and procedures, and by board order, agree to do the work, and then the city does the same thing, and so it's a partnership, it's each documented on the other's entity's minutes, and so you're just governed independently, but yet you're working together. If we wanted to put an extra layer on it and come up with a policy that each government entity would approve to say, "We're gonna do that going forward," I don't think anything would stop us from doing that, to put something in writing on the first line of the P S M A.
I, I think that, another option, and Alderman Perkins may have a thought process on this as well, if we did some type of, of local and private legislation that allowed this, and of course, this would be legislatively, but something that would allow us to move forward in, in the future, to cover us kind of a blanket, that would have to be something that would be approved by the legislature. Now, there is obviously the, the option of us going with a, uh, I don't know, a, a combined government in the future, that's not something that Mississippi's really crazy about in the past, and, and, and I don't suggest that it's a bad thing, I just suggest that it just hadn't been done. Um, but there may be a local and private legislation that we could, we could do something with, and there, there may be an issue with that, that I haven't really thought completely through its, its ends there, because it usually is, but, uh, there may be something that we could do there in the future, and that, that's a year away from now, uh, I think for the time being, I think the, um, what we're talking about doing now with us spreading this over the minutes is probably appropriate for, for the moment.
And that's what we did for Garrett Road, and that's what we can do for, if we are, you know, able to do Hospital Road, for example. Um, and I don't, I don't know that we were necessarily thinking Hospital Road this year, but that, again, sets us up for, for next year. Um, so, um, you know, that may be, that may be a way to go about it, and the local and private would just be like a, a blanket that says the county and the city can work together without going through an interlocal agreement.
I'm still bottom here at this point, so, so if, if this goes off track, it just is, because I'm thinking out loud, but if we had a local and private legislation that allowed our governments to work together, and honestly, this would be something that, that I have not seen before, so I just have not seen this operate, but, uh, I do know that, that, uh, that, that is a possibility. Uh, now, the question that's gonna be asked at that point is, well, if we're gonna do it this way, why are we not just going ahead and combining the two governments?
Well, I think probably, that's a really big bite, it would be nice to take some small steps and see how all of that works, that would give us an opportunity to do that.
There have been a few places in the south that have done this already, Rob, and I wondered if they, if they took it all in one bite, or whether they did it instead, so Macon, Georgia, and whatever county Macon, Georgia's in, um, is one government now, and I don't know whether they just boom did it all at one time, or whether, whether they phased it in, and then now they just, you know, they have a, a countywide elected, or what they call it, board or whatever, but they do that now, but I don't know whether they did it all at one time or not, no, and that was national, not a good comparison, but Davidson County, Nashville, Tennessee, are all one government.
Isn't it one of the coast, don't we have one on the coast that Hancock County?
The county, the counties have a, a, a working arrangement down on the coast.
And they actually go through, I mean, they've got so many, what Mississippi loves its governor, for whatever reason, uh, but they've got so many, because of the beach, there's this connector, that they were able to use that as a, the ability for them to work together on a lot of, of, of different projects. Um, that may be an, an option for us to look at, to see, and Macon, Georgia, I'll pull some stuff on that, to see, see kind of how they did it, but, these are, these issues have got pluses and minuses. Your county people, uh, they think of themselves as more rural, the truth of the matter is, some of the same issues that the city of Starkville is dealing with aren't exactly the same issues that we're dealing with out in the county. Um, when these apartment complexes decided to start building out there, it created a road issue, and any person that's traversed those areas, you've experienced those problems. So, we're gonna have to look at this and maybe take a bite at the apple in a, in a different way than what we've been doing.
So, that would be interesting to explore. Yes, ma'am.
And, and I have two things to throw out, when you're looking at other places who've done this, and Memphis is not a good comparison, but Memphis considered it and chose not to move forward with it. Um, and, and one of the things that everybody thinks is that when you consolidate the governments, it's gonna be more efficient and, um, economically as well as, in, in just processes, and it turns out that's rarely the case, that it costs you less when you have consolidated the governments. So, look at Memphis, that's fairly recent. And then the other is, we, we've talked from years gone by about the possibility of overlay districts, um, in, in areas circling, um, the city, so maybe the planning doesn't apply to the entire county, because that is a kind of a, a difficult sell for some of your county residents, but those people who live closer to the city probably recognize the, particularly, there's been an apartment complex built in their, in their area, there, there may be more of an area, so you may, we may be able to develop some overlay districts as opposed to a full, as an interim step.
Like half a mile from the, a mile.
I think there's a lot of education that needs to be done on both parts. You know, people have to realize that the city can't progress without the county, and the county cannot progress without the city.
Absolutely, throw the university in there too.
They do not understand it, even what you're talking about, those that live on the edge, they won't, they won't be close to the city, but they don't wanna bear the responsibility or the burden that the city has.
We may be familiar with that.
We want our cake, but we don't, we haven't won either two percent. And I think that we need to, because ultimately, if we do this, it's gonna be at the will of the people, and it has to be a major educational campaign to get people to understand the benefit behind it, not, not that it's gonna benefit me, or benefit Mr. Perkins, but we're looking at the overall, long-term benefit. And our county has a good problem, my area has a good problem, we're growing faster than we can keep up with it.
Yep.
And that's why the county is always playing defense. The issues we're dealing with, these are defensive issues, and the city, you know, plays a little bit more offensive because of the type of clientele and the type of expectations that you all have. And, and, but we're all in the same.
Are y'all headed towards some type of zone, have y'all discussed?
Well, yes, we have, but we got some supervisors that do not wanna deal with it, they are afraid of it.
Sure, well, if you put it, yeah, if you just put it in a, in a close...
We don't have a majority of the board.
Close area around city limits, then that might be something that'd be more palatable.
Well, it might, it may be, but you have to get the ball rolling.
I tell you, we get a ball, something like that would be, somebody buys fifty acres below on these big subdivision, Prestige Farms, and wants to put in a big...
Big farm.
Hot farm. Well, see, now... That's what got, that's...
What was off on that is marijuana, medical marijuana. See, people thinking that medical marijuana is gonna be the, the save-all for, for economic growth, and think it's gonna be the worst thing that can ever happen, but it's not, because it is, it's not like it's a free fall for everybody, if you really look at the opportunities behind it. But you got to be educated, you got to understand the dynamics of, of where it's going.
And the Memphis Shepherd County thing, that had a lot to do with Germantown and shit, and Collierville, and, 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 uh, y'all, a lot of the same dynamics you saw there, and you seen in Jackson, and other places where you money folks get out, and it was, and then they don't wanna be part of some, that's, in, in the Memphis thing, that's what happened. Davidson County didn't, you know, they, they worked this through, and Macon County, Georgia, they, they, they made theirs work, but, um, I don't know, that's, that's...
But, but getting back to the old issues that we, that brought us here.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The issue that we brought us here?
Yes.
It's, it's simple, you all want us to do something to partner with your Hospital Road, what do you want me to do with Old Mayhew? You want me to leave it like it is and let you take it, or you want me to fix it?
Well, no, we want, well, no, we, I would, I believe, and I...
Cause you got it now.
Yeah, we do, we do, we absolutely do, no question about it. And one of the things that, Mr. Kemp, actually, you can speak to this, because when you were working as city engineer, you had a plan for Old Mayhew, Old Mayhew Road, would you mind speaking to what we're looking at doing?
And I'll lose, uh, Mr. Mary Williams too, who updated the, uh, cost estimate for that as well.
Okay.
We did an initial cost estimate back at the very inception of the annexation process, which, that was about three, maybe four years ago, and as you know, construction prices...
Actually, it was five, um, but, but talk about what you were talking about doing to it, because you're not just talking about overlay.
Right, so we, uh, we were planning on doing a full rebuild of that roadway, uh, utilizing the existing pavement and incorporating that into the base of the roadway, doing a soil cement treatment of that, and then doing a, uh, an overlay on top of that, there's some, also some site distance and intersection angle issues there where it ties into East League Boulevard, we've had some conversations with Mississippi State about making that a much safer intersection there, potentially a three-way, uh, stop condition. And then also, uh, in the, in the medium term, is also to provide some type of pedestrian connection down to the retreats as a, as a first phase, because there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that apparently is already using that roadway, and there's really no accommodation for that at this time.
Yeah, so it, it was a much larger project than just simply an overlay.
Right, well, my, what we, what I had envisioned was doing a full death reclamation in Chipseal, but I don't know whether that's acceptable to, to the city's standard.
Well, because it's Old Mayhew, because it's such a big connector, I would like us to do the hot mix approach. Um, and Mary, did you, did y'all have a, a new estimate, did you say?
We did do an updated estimate, I can give you those numbers, I wanna say that it was around...
It was originally eight hundred thousand, wasn't it?
Believe it was, just under a million, and I think when we added the new intersection in the sidewalk and updated the construction prices, it's up between one and a half and two now.
Oh, great.
Is the base, is the base good?
No, no, the base needs to be reconstructed, there's some area, soil cement needs to be added, needs to be widened, drainage is horrible in places, because that was built as a, as just a, it was just built as just a road with a few houses on it.
If you do that, you did the, is that a double, is that a DVST, or is it just...
It's asphalt right now, is it not?
It's got asphalt in places.
Use a large aggregate, and then come back and tie it with a fine, you finish, it'll be a smaller aggregate, right, and then a second later, right? But that makes that, that makes a pretty good circle.
It is, it'll be a big transfer.
It won't be a blackjack road now.
Yeah, no, it won't.
But, but I tell you what, Mississippi Department of Transportation for years, on these, on these three number highways, every other time, they'd do an overlay, and then they'd come back and do B, uh, not DV, they'd do a Chipseal, and then I guess maybe that, that held asphalt or, you know, surface for so many years, and they'd come back, and then the next time they'd overlay, but they were doing in-between, they were doing Chipseal. In fact, you see some Chipseal highways now, and they do real well.
Okay, uh, Brickley, I'm sorry, I'm surprised.
I was just gonna say, um, you was talking about, it's yours now, the annexation, need to discuss the garbage issue and the ones that the residents in the apartment complexes that still have county government garbage cans, and how that's all gonna be switched...
Our sanitation director has been working with, uh, Golden Triangle, and, and we have sent out flyers, in fact, today and yesterday, as soon as we found out it was effective, we put flyers on residences' doors to tell them we would start picking up on Monday. They'll be on Monday and Thursday route, and then we're dealing with the commercial folks, which is what those residential, with the cans, with the big cans are, uh, we're dealing with those separately, so we're trying to stay ahead of it, or get ahead of it.
So, what about the containers that are there?
The, and you're talking about the, like, the tip, the residential tippers?
Y'all do bags, correct?
We, we do, we do, um...
I'd like to leave them there, I talked to Mr. Smiley yesterday, and what happens is because, uh, because due to the nature of those areas being not as much activity, well, it's in the city now, but at the same time, you know, it was in the county, and I would think that it'd probably be good for the city until you all can get things better evaluated, to keep those cans in place, to keep trash from being all over everywhere.
Well, we're letting Mr. Smiley work with those folks, and, and see what, see how we can best transition.
But as far as getting the cans, reclaiming the cans back, a lot of those cans have been out there, some of them have been there for twenty-five years or better, so they really don't have any, much value to them, and, and, and I know at one time I thought you all were, didn't you all consider at one time going to...
We have considered it off and on for years, and have never actually pulled the trigger on that, so...
So, that, you know, we got cans, y'all have bags, y'all have y'all's issues with bags, we have our issues with cans.
Sure, of course.
You know, but...
There's no perfect solution?
No perfect solution, but, you know, but you have citizens, if the county were to, I guess, pull those cans, I guess, that'll be a decision the board, I guess, will have to make, whether we're going to do that, and right now, I'm the garbage man.
You are, okay.
I'm the one that they call in putting, I go fix cans, put cans, and do all that kind of stuff, and, and, and the animal control man.
Okay, well, we're about to relieve you of those.
You know, as far as some things, and so people don't realize that, that, you know, inside the city has, has, has some benefits, and of course, we got some issues out in those areas too.
Sure, well, and if you will, uh, if you stay in touch with me on what, where some of those things are, I'll try to direct and get in touch with those folks and help them understand how some of those changes are, and how we can be responsive, and maybe relieve you a little bit of that.
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
Okay, alright, well, yes, and, and to circle back to the original discussion was about Old Mayhew Road, and we're, we do have things we wanna do to Old Mayhew Road, um, to improve it, and it's, you know, to bring it up to standards that allow for some pedestrian access, and, and do some serious base repair and that kind of thing.
How much of Bardwell do you all have?
We don't have much of Bardwell, I think it just goes to like the end of the retreat.
The end of retreat, probably, so, so we need to include that, see, Bardwell needs some attention too, because we beat Bardwell up fixing blackjack.
Yeah.
See, that's the thing about it, in the, with any kind of construction you do, and people don't understand that, as far as, you know, we have to, to fix something, you got to tear up something, because you got to bring the material in, you got to haul it out, and that's just part of the process, but you have to understand that you have to find some type of common ground to make it all work. So, Bardwell needs some attention, I didn't realize Bardwell is a busy, busy road.
Yeah.
Although if, it has the name of a roller coaster, it is, is busy, a busy road, and it needs some attention to.
I think, I think our city limit line, and that would be one of the things, actually, we've gone out and marked it, uh, Ms. Williams, did you mark it with, um, Mr. Black the other day?
Yes, sir.
And how far down Bardwell, does it go where the retreat ends?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not very deep into Bardwell, so it will be, yes, sir?
Would you mention, go, circle back to Hospital Road and talk about it?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, well, um, but anyway, just in terms of where that is, if you're gonna be doing Bardwell, it'll be pretty much the, where the retreat ends, and then going to east, I guess, or, or east, southeast. So, um, yes, and, and part of what we were gonna discuss was Hospital Road, and I think, um, Representative Roberson had sought to see if there might be some ability to use the funds of the one and a half million dollars we have for Hospital Road, but it was an extension, and so that language was fairly specific.
Yeah, that's correct. Um, before we get away from the garbage issue too far, one of the concerns I have is to make certain that, that we don't have double billing of our, our people, GDB, they're, we certainly don't want two billing cycles to go out, we'll have people really upset with everybody.
Yes.
Uh, so if we can make certain that, that in the transition, that doesn't occur, and I, that's just...
Mr. Smiley's been working with PDD, and they're the ones that do the billing, so, um, my understanding is that they're putting all that together so that will be no double billing.
I'm certain that, that Alderman and the supervisors, and the two attorneys here will appreciate that.
Yes, well, we'll all hear from them, yeah. Yep.
Okay, so you said double billing, in the county, you get one pickup a week for thirteen dollars, in the city, you get two pickups a week for how much?
Um, seventeen fifty, I believe it is.
And that includes rubbish and, um, the money for the garbage pickup.
It is a deal, it is a deal, I'm here to tell you.
But you know, you have to explain that to the citizens to understand, you know, what all comes with having city sanitation.
I fully expect to have multiple conversations, but yes.
Cause I don't know whether that was in the letter or not, as far as, that their garbage bill will be increasing?
Um, no, probably not, probably not, and I will, I will circle back to that.
But that is a concern, we need to make sure to communicate that to the...
I'm out.
To the Cali Service or like that sort of sanitation.
Well, and if we have rubbish pickup, you have to call us, we have to schedule something, so, you know, they need to know that they can put it out there, and you can get the rubbish.
Yep, okay.
We tell the cities what we do, and say, "Y'all still pick it up, you said you still do it twice a week?" I said, "Yeah, not only that, our trucks will make the circle, make a block, come back." If they, if they know somebody's gonna be late, or that somebody's just, you know, chronic a late foot guard, they'll go back around and make another loop, pick up, you know, like, I'm always just...
Or they'll go back later in the day, you know?
Absolute, county first-class service.
I didn't mean to gloss over the question about using the money for the extension project. Uh, I think Chris and I had had a conversation, and Chris was exactly right when we got to read it, and I actually read it and was really, really hoping, because in the legislation, it clearly states it's an extension of Hospital and Stark Road, and I was really hoping, because it talked about both roads, and it talked about Hospital Road being a part of that, I talked to DFA yesterday, um, and she had to, to be able to go back in and look at it themselves, but DFA, whenever they look at it, they look at it from the standpoint of specifically what the language of, that it says, and the language says an extension. Uh, we have three years to use that money for an extension, uh, starting, uh, last December, so we got three years to use that money. to use that money. My hope is, when we go back next year, and, and this is part of the reasoning in terms of us sitting here having these conversations, is us to get a, a major plan together to where some of the things that the county's doing, some of the things the city's doing, we go in together and say, hey, these are the important things that we want to do, and get that money for the overlay, whether it be Hospital Road. Now, my job isn't to determine what this, our boards decide is the most important. My job is to go out here and try to, to help get some funding for it. But from what she said yesterday, that we, we just couldn't use that money unless it was for, and I think all the attorneys were probably ahead of me, I was probably being more.
Optimistic.
Very optimistic. And I was really, really hoping that we could, we could, because I don't want that money sitting there. The issue is not that I don't want the extension, the issue is I want what needs that we have to be plugged in as quickly as we can. And so, what she basically said is if this is something that, that we want to proceed with next year, when we come back, come back and try to get some money for that overlay, or whatever our priorities are. I'm here again, I'm not suggesting what our priorities are, I'm just suggesting that, that she suggested to go back in next year and, and plug that in. Now, we could go and ask for that money to be reallocated.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Well, we could. Here's the problem.
It doesn't work well.
You know where I'm probably fixing up. The minute I bring that money back into a discussion is the minute, and, and, and that's kind of what I ran into this year, and I'm having to, in all honesty, I'm having to learn, I'm making a lot of asks for different entities, and those, every time I make an ask, that's another checkmark behind my name.
Yep. So, it's a zero-sum game, in other words, we're not gonna get more in addition to the one and a half.
Correct. Well, we may get more.
Well, but I mean, that would be counted.
Correct. If we, if we include that in our, in our thought process, and, and here's the thing, I really do believe that, that I can, assuming that this is what our boards want to do, I, I think I can get some money for that overlay project, I really do. That being said, this kind of goes into the whole plan of that whole section over there, what we want to do in the future. That money just has to be spent. I think that this may cover our engineering.
Well, and that's what Mr. Kemp and I have talked about over the last year while we were trying to decide how we were gonna use that, because it's about what it'll take to do the engineering work. Is that correct, Mr. Kemp?
That, that makes me feel.
And we can get it started.
Right, that, and I would be in favor of whatever it took for us to go ahead and lay claim to whatever property and whatever engineering we could get done out there. And it takes us another five, ten years, whatever that is to do it, because this is a, this is a slow process. Nobody understands this better than the people sitting at this table, that this is a slow process sometimes. It's something that I had to live with in my earlier age, whenever I just could not get my head wrapped around it. Now, I, I kind of understand it a bit better. However, moving forward, I would like for us to continue these conversations to determine what, what we want to do, where we want to put our emphasis on. And we need to really focus these things down to one or two things from the county, one or two things from the city, and move forward with it. Of course, I know Main Street Project is a very important project.
Well, and I was, I was gonna go there, because to me, the Main Street Project also represents the county. I mean, your county courthouse sits right in front on Main Street, so, you know, that's a big, big project, and I think, thank you, Representative Robertson, for the million two fifty we got. So, we've got some decent funds that are dedicated toward it, but it certainly is a big project and needs to have more funds. So, that's one of those county things that I think it represents, you know, we're your county seat. So, it represents the county and the city in ways that I think are very, very important. And so, I would love to see that be, be part of what we talk about, Hospital Road, Main Street, and, and those are kind of the immediacy of those, because we do have opportunities. I have asked Senator Hyde Smith and Congressman Guest for some appropriation funding in this coming appropriation year, and if we get lucky, that may be another couple of million coming our way, and, and we can, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there, and we, before you know it, we have a major portion of it paid for. And it's, I do think it's a transformative project for the city and therefore, for the county as, as us being your county seat, so.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, to just top the end of it. Supervisor, Trainer, Miller, are there any funds available with the county right now to assist or help the city with overlay of Hospital Road from Highway three eighty-nine to, what is it, Hawassee?
Hawassee.
We don't have any money that's just actually dedicated for that, some money that would have to be reapportioned or reapplied, if you want to call that, or either restructured or changed the rank. Because, see, what happens is here, you know, all of us got our priorities. All of us got our own personal agenda. But at the same time, you know, you sit there thinking about what your number one, what my number one priority is, and, and I don't know whether it's the priority or the will of the people. So, I guess before we do anything, we have to determine those that we serve, what they want us to be doing, and, and then put together some kind of game plan. What you're saying here from the cost estimate you gave me, I think it was like two hundred and.
Mr. Kemp, would you refresh us on the Hospital Road, was it two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty, somewhere in there?
Mayor, that figure that we have for Hospital Road is for overlay that's scheduled for twenty twenty-four. I think it's gonna be closer to between one hundred and forty-two to one hundred and forty-five, Mr. Kemp, and your figures.
Plus, plus.
As far as patching, overlaying, striping, and of course, Mary, just since I have the floor here to do it right now.
Yes, sir.
It depends whether you're gonna go through the reclamation process, the county refers to, are we gonna do the soil cement, like we did the latter part of Hospital Road on about two thousand nine, two thousand and ten. So, but the figure that was tendered by engineering, this capital improvement, basically speaks to patching, overlaying, striping. So, it just depends upon what you and the two boards decide to do with the extent of the work. Now, if you're going to involve the soil cement, which certainly enhances the life, the quality, and durability, just like the lorry in the Hospital Road, so that's would be a focal point, amount of pen as to how you want to proceed, whether you want to do the soil cement. That would be certainly, I think, a very good conservative investment, as opposed, in particular, if the county's gonna come in. But otherwise, we just went with the patching, overlaying, striping from three to nine down to Hawassee for the twenty twenty-four year. And, Mr. Kemp, I think that figures are between one hundred and forty-two, one hundred and forty-five, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
What is it?
Hundred forty-two thousand.
Oh, boy, you got a great memory. Yes, sir. Well, if we, I would say if we're going to do it, and then we need to do the soil cement, we need to do the milling and, and just make it, make it totally refreshed. And again, that's one of those things that goes in front of your county hospital, our county hospital, but nonetheless, I mean, for which we all have a responsibility. And so, I would think that it wants to be, you know, we want it to be the best it can be as well, and if we're gonna do it, we must will do it right.
And you want us to pay how much?
Well, if we get a total number, we'd love to share it with you, so.
Share is what, is that half, twenty percent, thirteen?
Well, I, I think sharing is good, fifty-fifty works for me.
I mean, we can take the request back to the board and see what their response is.
Well, and we, I don't think we're set up to do it this year, because it would, to me, it would be, we'd move it up from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-three, because I don't think we're set to do it this year, because we haven't advertised for it or, or added any of that to it.
Did, did we move because we've reallocated or increased it? We've up parts of the station on South Montgomery because of, you know, failure on, on the surface there.
Yes, yes.
So, is there indiscretion in, in our, the monies we have set aside for paving because of the fact that we got the condition of Hospital Road that is in that? Is there sufficient, is there based, a lot of base failure? I, I see a lot of places where we patched the, the dry lanes of that road, but is it just base failure or the?
Especially just due to whole age and drainage.
So, there's not just a lot of wholesale, but base failure in the road?
Not this, not this evident from the surface.
So, now, what, so, and y'all know what I'm about to pay when I do, but would, why would you go in and put soil cement and that kind of stuff versus a four, a three-inch or a four-inch overlay or whatever you do, if, if you got sufficient, or a good enough base on the road right now?
Yeah, I think a great first step would be to do an analysis of what the existing base is to determine if it needs to be enhanced further.
Well, I was over there not too long ago, to get my COVID additional shot, and it is already fairly high. I think we'd seriously need to be milled down.
Right.
I mean, bad. It's like up to come out of a road to it. So, I think it would definitely need to be milled down and have more than just an overlay to it, so.
But I think, I think what Supervisor Trainer was asking us is if, if we were planning to do it, how much would we be asking far from them, and so we could maybe see if that's something that would be powerful to them or something that they would be able to do.
Well, it would depend on what, what kind of treatment it needs. So, that would be, if we're gonna analyze it, then let's analyze it and see if it needs places where it just needs some soil cement treatment or base or whatever. So, we would need to analyze it to come up with a number that we could then give to you.
So, is that, how high of a priority is Hospital Road? Is it one of the number one, I heard you mention South Montgomery. I mean, is that, is that a number one priority in the county? Because, see, you're up against time value money.
Right.
It's gonna be cheaper to fix it now than to wait later on to fix it.
No question about that.
Well, and we've already allocated, we've already done our four-year plans.
Right.
So, we've already, you know, decided what roads we're going to do, and we have to advertise that and change, you know, we'd have to switch, and we're fixing to get into construction season really heavy right now.
Do you, do you do your four-year plan on a four-year basis or do it on an annualized basis?
It's updated every year.
Yeah, well, we update it, but we've already, since we have additional bond money run over, we've already allocated those funds where, in each district where we think they're gonna go.
Okay.
So, that's the reason, you know, we would need to know, if there's specific things per district for a supervisor, we would need to have those discussions with those supervisors, whoever the alderman is in that area, with the city, and then, you know, let's come to some agreement and take it back to the board.
Okay, well, then in that case, why don't we do our due diligence to see what, what an overlay would cost for that, so if we could put something together where we analyze that and see what it needs and be able to come up with a number that we can then provide to y'all, and y'all can see if that's what you want to do.
And if you were talking about South Montgomery, were you, I mean, the last term?
South Montgomery is from Pinewood to Laurel Hill.
Laurel Hill.
Laurel Hill, thank you, where we tried to do an in-house job, and it just didn't.
Okay, because, you know, when we, we came off way inside the city limits when we did it last term.
Yes.
And we did in Chipseal, we.
Right, we did asphalt, asphalt, Mr. Kemp.
I was just gonna ask, Mr. Kemp.
Yes, sir.
You had traffic camps for Hospital Road, that's just, within five years.
We collected any in-house, but that, that's one of the primary.
Does MDOT do one?
So, we can, if we don't have any recent data, we can get some.
You have the idea off the top of your head what traffic.
Mayor, I say, I want to mention that, just on a traffic count, it's gonna be very high. I mean, the traffic is.
Oh, on Hospital Road?
Yes, ma'am, it's gonna be very high. The traffic count, just whatever we did, with the soil cement, Mr. Kemp, the traffic count is enormous, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Yes, sir, I think.
And that's my primary residence.
Major collector in our, in our road plan.
They take care of forty-five thousand cars a day, at least, probably, right?
And I know on the sixteenth, we're gonna hear the regional traffic study, the latest. So, not at the next board meeting, but on the sixteenth, they're gonna reach out to Miss Farmer, and we're gonna hear those numbers from the latest regional traffic study. So, we'll have that information as well.
Okay.
Yes, sir. This is an idea, and I'm merely trying to spitball here in terms of trying to figure out how for us to work together, but we can bond against our use tax, both sides. And you may have already, you may be.
She's already hit, I think.
She is.
There, there may be an opportunity here for us to, to come up with a game plan, and it doesn't raise taxes, so it's clear to.
And it can only be used for.
It would be directly used for road proj, and it has to be. I mean, it's, it's clearly stated that it has to be, but we could bond against that. And like you were saying, the, the using this in, in now, as opposed to ten years from now, you get more bang for your buck, so to speak. So, this may be something that us, sitting here having a conversation, we take our, this, whatever ideology that we're coming up with for this, for a road plan, and take that as part of our thought process.
How much use tax do y'all get? Do you?
It's significant.
Yeah.
We get a good, we could.
But now.
If these numbers do not hold me to them, this is the conversation I had with our bond attorneys, we were told that we could bond about ten million on, if, if we used that money.
Yeah.
To, to balance against it, so, I mean.
If your life, your life has cost ten years, that's ten, y'all getting a million dollars a year on use tax, because that's, that's, are you getting that much?
No, 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 probably at once it materializes somewhat.
Well, when you get that four, fifteen percent, would it be a million dollars a year?
Probably, plus two.
Right, but what it would amount to, though, is that in bonding, we could bond that much, and then, of course, pay it back over that course, that period of time. And that would be a large hit if, in terms of trying to knock out some of the, the larger road projects. Now, I'm not suggesting to you that, that, that's what we want to do, but the reality is, you can't do a whole lot with three hundred thousand dollars or four hundred thousand dollars. What you can do is, if you can use that as your bonding authority, and it doesn't raise taxes on your, your people, and it's not an argument to be made there, you can use it to, to, to get a bigger project done. And, of course, you are committing that money to that, that payback, so that's.
Alderman Sistrunk has looked at that. In fact, ten million was exactly the number that.
Was our, my number.
Was y'all's number?
Yeah, that was, that was our number, because we're getting, we're getting enough that would support that, and then we could have a huge impact on multiple streets around town.
And we would not use, we would not use all of our use tax for bonding debt service. We would use some of it for pay-as-you-go to, to deal with some of those lesser streets. But you, you have pulled this cat out of the bag earlier than I intended.
Sorry.
But what I was hoping, when, when we, when we start talking about this, is that we do look at our arterial roads and our major collectors and using our use tax monies to, to fund some, some work there, so.
And another one, we're talking about that, is the new development right there across from the Armory and, you know, in front of the cement plant and stuff.
Triangle Crossing, yeah.
Mm-hmm. You know, with all that heavy construction going in right there, that's gonna be an area, you know, the cement plant, we've talked about that before.
Well, Industrial Road is on our list. What year is it, Mr. Kemp? Is it twenty twenty-three?
It's, yes, two, so it'll be next year.
Yeah, so it absolutely needs it.
I know we've talked about that area before, figuring out how it, but that needs to be something that's on the horizon.
Yeah.
And, and that's part of this discussion. While, while we can say, we can bond ten million dollars, the devil will be in the details of where that ten million dollars goes.
Yeah, absolutely.
But folks, circling back to Hospital Road again, could we get Mr. Kemp to get us some estimates on what, and then get back to the four supervisors before, after we do that, so we can at least put it in their hands, determine, and then make a proposal then on what participation, if this would be a fifty-fifty or what, how do we want to do that, and see if that's something y'all could, I mean, you might consider.
We'll consider, but now, what a rubber meets the road is, is on bid day. We just opened some bids on some roads the other day, that came in over a million dollars more than what we had been told that the road project was gonna cost.
And asphalt.
I understand.
Over a million dollars more.
In the mean.
And so, what I'm saying is, is that you can get these estimates, but what actually happens on bid day is what's gonna make the project move.
Absolutely.
And that's, and that's back to.
So, and I don't know what our estimates are not.
Ten million dollars may go this far, may go that far.
So, you really need to get a very aggressive estimate, so you won't be in for no surprises on bid day.
Well, it's about the point now where you add twenty percent for contingency, not ten, not fifteen.
I'm thirty in my mind.
Mr. Kemp, is our asphalt, so that's, we already got that bid, that's laid in place per mile or per whatever now, or per thi, I mean, what, what do we, what are estimate for, when we pay this summer, that's already locked in price, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
And is it, is it determined on how much, do we get to a certain point where they say, uh-uh, now we're gonna charge you a new price, or what, what, what are we?
What we have done in the past is if we add a street that is, that was not on the original list, so, for example, South Montgomery's gonna fall into this scenario, and once
And once we enter into a contract, their bid price is locked in. And we can add certain amounts of quantities to that, and they would typically held that same price.
We did Hospital Road like that, and it was a, the cost was based on what your, your locked-in price is now. And we knew that, we knew it was gonna be based on that. That would be the number we'd be working with when we came to folks in Astro and Circuit.
Most available data, most current data, that would be.
How did our prices come in?
Yeah, a little bit higher.
But not, not a million over?
No, not even like that.
Twenty, 20% higher, but we have small contingency built in, and we're gonna.
Only one.
One bill. Could we work towards something where we can get some kind of idea of the cost to do it, based on our current?
Okay, we've got too many conversations going on here, I'm sorry.
That's kind of understood, what our, what our portion.
And their thing would be, instead of a bid, it would be a reimbursement or a participation based on what our, what that cost is right now, based on.
Okay, well, we can certainly look at that, so let's see about getting a number for Hospital Road.
We will.
Okay, all right, as soon as, as soon as we can, and see if that's something that y'all can plan for either now or plan for later.
Now, the other annex road, Lakeside Barbecue.
We've already got them on our, on our plan, and, but it's coming up in the next two and three years, correct? Because we got it, we promised to do it within five. So from a chip seal, and those will be chip sealed, those will be DBST. But yes, our plan is to, is to chip seal those roads that are currently gravel.
And the sewer and all those other, is it services, I know what the intent is to have all the services.
Fire protection water. So those are the two services. Other than that, they belong to Clayton Village Water Association and the East Octavia Hall Sewer Association. But there are some homes that are, do sewer service, and so we're gonna be working on those in this five years. And then also the lighting, there's a lighting program that we've got. So, yeah, sewer and fire protection water. So those are the biggies, those are the big particular numbers.
They go from seven to three. But you all can never provide electricity to those new areas?
No, that belongs to Port County.
You can never provide water.
Not unless they give it to us, and we were.
Of course, y'all got one, no west one.
Yeah, we got, oh, West Point Road asked us to take it, Bluefield asked us to take it. So we've, we've absorbed a number of water associations at their request, but we do kind of wait. And I expect others will over the coming years.
When they have huge capital expenses, suddenly it's an attractive thing.
So, so as we come up with where we want to look at for our priorities, be it Hospital Road, be it Rock Hill, be it Old Mayhew Road, some of those, as we, as we move forward, we can see where y'all are willing to participate with us on, on those. But your plans are set for four years with some latitude?
There's some flexibility. Now, Rock Hill, what are you referring to? Starting from where the pavement projects ended and going north?
Well, if you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If you're referring to Rock Hill, you're referring to barely at the northern portion, once you cross that bridge going north to the city limits. We just recently, within the last year or two, patched overlay and striped Rock Hill Road, beginning at its intersection with North Montgomery, going north up to the bridge, correct, Mr. Kemp?
Yes, sir, that's right.
And that's about $125,000 project for a patching overlay and striping. So, but the city does have, Mr. Kemp, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the latter portion of that road within your five-year capital improvement plan. And so certainly, Mayor, we would welcome, and I speak for the Vice Mayor, and I think the board would be, you know, if the county was sharing that. But, Mr. Kemp, am I correct there?
Yes, sir, it's in priority six.
Yes, sir, I thought it was, yes. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Well, I just think this is an opportunity for us to, you know, kind of see where we lie and what, what our priorities are and how they match with y'all's.
And I think there's an opportunity for us to partner in, in, in road construction. Because y'all talking about milling, y'all not building roads? That would, to me, I think there's a great opportunity for the city and the county to, to partner with our road department and y'all's street department. And we could probably cut out a lot of these contracts on doing a lot of stuff y'all need done in the city, because you're talking about little milling work and stuff like that, and then do some stuff in the county.
Okay, y'all can do milling work? I don't know what y'all capable of doing.
You know, we, we build roads, we don't build what we call new roads. We're upgrading and improving roads that are gravel roads, and, and we do drainage and some other things.
Okay.
But when you're talking about coming in, doing an overlay of Hospital Road, I can't see why we don't have the capabilities without, within our staff in the city and the county, put them guys together and push somebody that can get them guys to understand, just like these contractors, and do a lot of this work that we're contracting out for.
Well, I don't, I think we've learned on South Montgomery that we don't have the expertise to do the overlay.
But you can, they can be trained.
Well, but we don't have the equipment.
You can purchase it.
Yeah, yes, we can, yes, we can.
So, because what's happening is, even with these contracts, even with these contracts, you, you got some experience with some of these contracts. I don't care who they are. If the city and the county can work together, you can get probably better quality of work, more bang for your buck, and then not have some of the issues that you have with, with some of the contracts on some project. But you have to have the mindset to go at it like that. But with, with the city and the county doing, we could take our road department, combine it with the street department, find somebody who understands what we're trying to do, and get those guys working together, get good people trained, good salaries, and we can compete against Burns or any other contractor out there. And not only that, but we can get in the bridge building business. That's, we spend a lot of money right there, building bridges and stuff. But you got to have somebody who understands how to.
I could see us in the road building business before I could see us in the bridge.
Well, I tell you what, when you build out a bridge and you get those bids back.
Yeah. Well, no, we have, we have.
And you see how much it costs to build a bridge?
We have done that.
You know, just like the man told us, you know, you can drive a road, you, you can drive a car down a bumpy road, but you can't cross a creek.
Well, we, we actually have built a bridge, we took an old bridge and built a bridge.
But I mean, maybe, maybe I'm going a little too far with my thinking, but I just.
Well, no, I mean, I think it's certainly something we, we can explore. I don't, I don't mind us looking at what we can do and how we can do it now.
But that was the kind of things that if we partner and work together and not allow our personal agendas to keep us from doing this, we can do some tremendous things.
To, to piggyback on just some of what, what we're talking about, the combined directions, South Montgomery, Oktok, that whole corridor over there, y'all, in 10 years, we're not gonna be able to handle the, the traffic flow on either of those. And they all, they all connect, every one of those roads connect, whether that be to the city or the county. I'm, I'm concerned that if we don't have some cooperation as to how we're looking at this right now. Because, keep in mind, a, a lot of that traffic on Oktok is used in South Montgomery as a border. If you're gonna go, you, you're gonna avoid the university, no offensive university, but you're gonna avoid that area as much as you can. One of the things that I've, that I've noticed, and I don't travel South Montgomery that much, but I do enough to know, that it, it's a problem. It's gonna be a major problem in the future. To me, regardless of what the county does outside, whether it be on Oktok Road or, or the, the connector road, I forgot the name of the connector road there. Regardless of what we do, South Montgomery doesn't have the ability to handle the traffic flow. We're gonna have a major problem on South, and, and we're, and we're basically handing that over to the city if we're not careful. And I, I don't know what the answer to that is, but.
Oliver and Sistrunk?
Well, you, you do know that we've got a traffic study, again, for South Montgomery that's gonna go all the way from 12 to Poorhouse Road. And that was one of my priorities, hoping that we could talk about that, because eventually, that, that's just, that's an elephant in the room. We've got to address that.
It's been an elephant in the room, I hate to say it for some years.
I bet our traffic studies will go back and tell us we need to widen, add lanes or add turn lanes to the road.
Well, the, the last traffic numbers that I had, which I just got off the MDOT map, there's like 14,000 cars a day on South Montgomery.
14,000 cars a day.
South Montgomery.
It's definitely, well-traveled, no question about it. Okay, um, did you?
Well, my only thing is, is that regardless, when we're doing this traffic study, the county and the city need to have, be sharing this information and, and whatever we're doing, because part of those, that traffic you're talking about are neighborhoods that are on Oktok.
Yeah, that's right.
And it's just gonna grow. This is where a lot of the people, a lot of the neighborhoods, and we got neighborhoods continuing to grow out there. It's amazing to me that whenever you think you can't put any more over there.
They're expanding.
Well, off of Poorhouse and off of South Montgomery, both Arcadia, and I don't know what their name was, the new one that, that Mr. Oswald's doing, but.
I'm sorry, I don't even think he's named that yet. I mean, they're just surveying it right now, so.
Neil Heisman has bought some more acres behind Heritage Cottage.
Yeah, that, yeah, we've already, we've already started working on that one.
Yeah, yeah. So no question, we're growing, we're certainly growing in that direction. We're just growing, period. And so, yeah, we've got to plan as though, you know, we have to set people up for the next 50 years to what they're gonna be able to do when we're, when we're not any longer involved in it. So that traffic study is a good way to, to go about it and be looking at that. So there are, there are certainly priorities, and perhaps if, you know, we, we kind of put our priorities in and then y'all have yours, and we do an overlay concept of, of how those can intersect. We do one of those, one of those Venn diagrams of where they intersect. We may be able to come up with some immediate projects that we can go forward together on and ask about. And we'll pursue that. I mean, I hadn't thought about us doing an in-house. We can look and see, what does that equipment cost? What kind of personnel have to man it? And, and what kind of savings are you looking at? And is it worth all of that? Because you also talk about storage and people and upkeep and all the things that go with adding, adding that kind of thing.
Depreciation of equipment.
All of that, very good of that.
And, you know, my concern is, you assign all these tasks, but just like, you know, we're trying to build roads in the summertime, we're always also trying to clip.
Yeah.
And, you know, so when you're trying to do that many projects in the summertime, which is your main time, and you have to clip in the summertime and the residents want that done, sometimes it's better to outsource things.
Yeah, well, and that's.
Because we just bought brand-new tractors and, and clippers. We certainly hope we get there, but we also have bought all types of new paving equipment. So, you know, do we actually have the staff to man everything?
Yeah.
And, and get the projects done?
Yeah.
Because they're all timely projects.
Yes, absolutely, and all that has to be taken into effect.
Yeah, we have.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Asphalt paving machine.
We have asphalt paving machine. I don't think we use it while we got it. Mr. Kemp, did we do, did we in-house do South Montgomery last time? We actually paved it with our own machine?
Not, not paving, we did base.
Paved, based, extensive base repair.
It was just an extensive, extensive base repair.
But this problem we have is not base repair, it's, I asked that surface coming up, right? All the potholes, they're not going all the way through the, through the bottom of the ground. That's all coming up off that last overlay.
You're talking about hospital?
No, no, we're talking about South Montgomery.
Oh, right, the, the top layer.
So that's just bad ass, I mean, I'll say it. It was assed off, it had to stay down like it thought it would, so.
High traffic. I mean, he said you got 14,000 cars a day, right?
Well, that number is owned up closer to Academy Road, but, but that's, that's as far, or that's where the MDOT team.
And, and elements, I mean, you know, you just can't, you're not gonna build a road that's gonna stay there forever. With the traffic and elements, hot, cold, wet and dry, I mean, this soil's gonna do what it does. It comes together and goes, goes apart.
Okay. Well, we are, we are rapidly approaching an hour, and I know I don't want to keep y'all for too long, but I did want to see, you know, we can circle back with any number of, of things that we can look at, the cost of Hospital Road, we can certainly explore what it would mean if we took, if we did in-house paving, we can certainly look at it. And then look at some of those streets that are important to the, to all of us, to both our parties, and see where else we can, we can deal with, at least from a paving standpoint, because that's one of the priorities for you guys. And I think the use tax support of the bonding is, is a really viable way to go about that. And, and it gives you an immediacy that's very impactful when you take that and, and you just do it. You know, suddenly you look different than you looked before when you were doing it piecemeal. So I think it's a real opportunity that we have.
And we combine our efforts and the way we're talking about doing this, you talk about a substantial.
Yeah.
It'd be life-changing for, for a lot of our property and how we approach it. These things pay for themselves over the course of, especially, I'm all about new roads, and that's where my brain sits a lot of times, but, but I, but the reason is because the economic development it creates for, for our people.
Yeah. Well, new, new roads, like expanding Hospital and Stark, certainly open other areas up, not unlike Garrett Road did when we went east with it. But, you know, also your impact on people coming into town, which we have a huge tourism aspect. When they see it and we look good, then they want to be here, and they want to come back, and we hope they want to come live here. So, you know, all of that has an aspect that, that is almost incalculable in this, in terms of dollars, but it's very clear that it's real. And so how do we, how do we join together to make that happen, just now?
I think it's important for the county, and I'm sure the city too. You know, often we take on, we can get bonding funds, we take on building all these additional roads. But, you know, if you're living within your current budget of a year that you're not bonding, bonding, how do you maintain these roads? So I think that we need to think about that, too. And I think that, you know, the roads that need maintenance, maybe, or overlay that we already have, maybe need to take some priorities. Of course, we talk about wanting to pave every gravel road, and I have the most in my district. But, you know, financially, you have to look at the possibility of actually doing that and being able to maintain what you already have.
That's what I'm saying, Mississippi, they're, they're, Mississippi built out this beautiful four-lane highway system. And then we've got same excise tax we had 30 years ago, and we can't maintain these four-lane highways anymore. So we're, we're unrealistic at state level about what it takes to maintain state highways. These, Highway 45 down to Meridian, place 82, 25 down toward Jackson, we not maintaining these four-lane highway systems now, because the same thing we were talking about. We built them out, we don't, we won't prioritize or, or set the money in place to be able to, to, to maintain this highway system that we have now, much less build a new stuff.
And that's absolutely.
We all, we all catalyze, we're on a Volkswagen budget.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. Well, now, we want to pay a Volkswagen price.
That's right.
Well, and, and I do think that's, that's absolutely legitimate, because maintenance becomes a part of it. Anytime you've got it, you build it, you've now got to maintain it. And, and that's certainly understandable, which is one of the reasons, you know, maintaining what we've got includes Main Street and Hospital Road and South Montgomery and all the things that are currently, currently built, so, yeah.
Well, y'all, and I, I know there's a negative here, but I drove to Texas less than a month ago, less than three weeks ago, and I'm gonna tell you something. When I got back to Starkville, Mississippi, I could have kissed the ground. The roads that I rode in between Louisiana and Texas were not, I mean, they, they weren't that great. I'm just being honest. Now, that being said, we have a problem that I'm not suggesting to you that we don't. But we got something special here.
We do.
I, I drove Florence, Alabama, two weeks ago, the time I crossed Alabama line and drove Highway 17 in Alabama and, and whatever, Tuesday, well, anyway, into Florence, and until the time I hit the Mississippi line on Highway 72 back toward Corinth, I was on not better, substantial, better highways in the state of Alabama. Now, that's not New York, California or Connecticut, that's Alabama. And I'm just saying, if, if our neighbors over there can, can do that, we can find a way to somehow to be close to them in, in the quality of our roads. And that's not the county road, this state highway and stuff, but, and they put in that, everything, laughing, what's that? They put in that crushed limestone asphalt, that gray-looking highway sheet, that stuff. And it's, it's pretty, and you get, and then, I have talked to a guy today, he says, I know when I come from Alabama to Mississippi, I know when I hit the state line. He says, it, it changes. He goes, also, I'm Ryan Smith, and goes, you know, and that's joint, it's also the quality of our highways. But we're just not realistic in the state of Mississippi about what it costs to, to maintain highways. Because, and now, our neighbors to the north and the east of us are, have put on excise tax and are doing things that's making their roads really nice now. And, I don't know, at some point in time, we're gonna have to look at that. The use tax is helping Mississippi, but.
Well, the best we can do is what we got control over, which is gonna be our, our streets, so.
But Mayor, definitive, what definitive things could we put on that we can buy next, by a certain time, we can have some information to get back to the county on?
Well, I, I think Mr. Kemp has got some marching orders there to get us some idea of what Hospital Road would cost us. And then we can certainly circle back, and there may be some opportunity for us to look at exactly what Representative Robertson's talking about, which is to use our use tax to make improvements that we can then, again, use our kind of Venn diagram to overlap and see where we can partner. We know we're partnering with Garrett, and Hospital Road makes sense to me, but it, you know, y'all have to make sure it makes sense to y'all. So there may be some other opportunities. Obviously, Old Mayhew Road, you've been generous in making that offer. But we'll, we'll look at those and, and we'll get, we'll, you know, we'll come up with a, with a list and have some more information and see where we might, might do that. In terms of the ditches and things, we have, we have done that partnership down South Montgomery in that area. So those are things we will continue to do. We have agreements on all the things that I was, had mentioned before. You know, and I didn't mention, you know, jail and detention. We, we partner with y'all in that sense, in that we contribute to the, the jail costs and the detention over in Lowndes County. So, you know, that's, that's part of what we kind of share in terms of our obligations to the community. So I, I think there are lots of ways that we partner and partner very well, and I think this may be a really big-ticket item that we can look at and, and make a big difference, make a big difference on it, so we'll, we'll do that. So, anything else before we kind of let everybody go think about what we talked about?
You all have your sessions on Fri, your work sessions on Friday?
Friday before our board meetings.
Friday, that's right.
Yes, so.
And I think we need to, we need to have more sessions like these. And maybe we just need to come, maybe I just need to start coming to y'all's work session.
Well, y'all can do that, you are certainly welcome to.
This could stop, right?
We can, we can do that, or we can just basically plan on them for, and I'll make sure that we get them noticed. I'll get with y'all to make sure we get noticed, but, yeah, we can do it at least once, at once a quarter, if nothing else, to have something that's more formalized so that we can all, I hate, you know, that y'all don't have your, your other three, but I understand, but we can, we can certainly, you know, we can do that.
But they can definitely go back and look and listen to what we talked about.
Yeah, no question about it. And that's the reason that we're, we're very proud to have Facebook as a part of this.
55,000 people now representing this room.
Yes, that's right.
That's a good thing, because instead of 25 over here, 25 over here.
No, I think, I think that's great.
That's a big thing.
Yeah, happy to do it, so. Well, thank you again, and what I will do is I ask for a motion, motion to adjourn. Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins, can I get a second from you to adjourn our special call? All those in favor? Thank you, we're adjourned. Thank you so much.
Oh, I appreciate it. I, I watch her, watch those capitalists, she's got, she's got her voice. How much of those Catholic equations, she's got her...
Yeah, yes.
A work session that deals with our upcoming agenda, this is gonna be our regular meeting, our first meeting of May, which is May the third, this Tuesday at five-thirty. And so, for our agenda items under announcements and comments, Mr. Kemp has me talking about the National Drinking Water Week, which I will do, I can learn a little more about it, but, and I will probably, will make a proclamation of some kind on that. And Mr. Ashford tells me there's no introduc-, Mr. Ashford was in here a minute ago, no introductions of any kind. So, that'll be, that'll be all I'll be doing pretty much unless something comes up between now and then. Any comments that anybody wants to have labeled on the agenda? No? Okay, all right. So, public hearings, this is gonna be a busy, busy session, guys. We've got a number of public hearings and Mr. Havlin here, we'll let you make presentations on the public hearings, if you would, for us. Just let, kind of, for Facebook purposes, just let everybody know what it is that's going on.
The first public hearing is a combination of two requests for the same property, which is a special exception from the Masaba Park and School of 44 Marketplace, which is the former site of Al's Marketplace. And as part of that, they're also making a variance request from the school of local parks. The second public hearing...
Well, and let's do a little bit of in-depth, they have to do that because...
They're trying to redevelop the existing building and the existing parking lot. They're trying to comply with the current parking conventional requirements, the landscape requirements, the facade requirements on the front of the building. They're also closing some additional space on the porch, which is triggering site letter view, architecture view. They're trying to meet all the requirements, the two requirements that are kind of problematic was continuing the facade all the way around the building. They would prefer to paint the sides in the rear of the existing and then adding the stormwater into the parking lot, because currently there is no stormwater system with the parking lot.
They're not increasing impermeable surface in any of the...
No, because they're adding the landscape aisles, there will be an actual reduction. As far as how much that changes the numbers, I don't know, but it will be a reduction in that, very much.
Okay, all right. And just for discussion purposes, because it happened on Nextdoor as long as we're talking, I gave them the wrong information, it's gonna be an Ace Hardware and a Corner Market.
Corner market is what I understand.
Yes.
I'm looking that up.
That's what the signs is.
Well, I had said, yeah, I had said fresh market and I was told quickly that there's a big difference between the two and I did not know. So, it is planned right now as a corner market and an Ace Hardware.
Yes, I believe so. And then there's also a third retail space that hasn't been determined.
Okay, all right.
What was the size of those stores? How big's that grocery store gonna be?
I think it's, I think it's like sixty thousand and...
The total building is sixty thousand.
Sounds like it's gonna break down.
Fifteen is for the Ace Hardware.
Sixty, forty split.
So, nice size of grocery store.
Yeah, forty-five, that's what I said.
Forty, strip out that, I suppose.
Then the next two public hearings are the same activity of different properties. It's for the coconut gas station on University Drive and then for the, down the hash gas station on Russell. And it's just they're removing their monumental signs, they're pulling signs and they're wanting to put a electronic message board on the gas station canopy facade.
Which is allowed, right?
Which is allowed, but the actual size of the message board to put it up there exceeds the requirement. So, that applied for a variance to be able to put the ones up that are kind of the standard for Marathon.
Okay, and they are, how much oversized from what our code is?
We allow for twelve inches, I want to say they're twenty-five inches.
So, it's double?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is an example of the signs that as they exist in other locations, that's Marathon's standard.
So, that's what they're wanting, is Marathon's...
And the one that has the diesel, that would only be on the Russell Street location because they have diesel as an option. The one in the University, University Drive location, they don't have diesel. It would just be a single, it's not an option.
And that one's located at a stop sign, right? Russell Street and Spring?
Go ahead, yeah.
But these will be on the campus, they won't be on the monumental sign on the front.
No, no, they chose not to apply for special technical monumental signs due to the how the building is decided. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't look good, it'd be kind of problematic, they just prefer to do the campus signs.
Okay.
If one of them, University Drive, I mean, there's no monumental sign.
No, there's not.
It would have to be placed either on the Nash Street side, which is right adjacent to a bunch of residential houses, or on the side with the church, in either location of that highway.
I like that, I like that.
Yeah, my only concern is that it's...
It sounds huge.
It does sound huge. And you're, it's not like you're going fast, I mean, you're at a stop sign and you, well, actually, if it's the one at Gillespie, I was thinking it was the one at Russell and Spring, but it's the one at Gillespie and Russell?
Correct.
Okay.
It was kind of trade a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
But visually, it doesn't look as bad as it sounds when you read it.
It does not, it does not, you're absolutely right. So, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then the fourth request, this is for the medical offices being developed on Udonwell. And Udonwell, that part of the road is just a single, one side an access road, the other side is Highway twenty-five. And what they're proposing to do is to have two driveways, but the lot width doesn't allow them to have that by right, so they've applied for a variance to allow to have two driveway widths. And there's really no conflict, traffic is not a highway, traffic in that area, there's nothing that everybody crosses the street, not by driveway.
Okay, so it's not, it's not a big deal and BOA...
It wasn't very contentious. They voted against the requisite approval of all these.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
And then the last one is multiple requests for setbacks, for parking setbacks and for building setbacks and a reduction in the drive-out width for the old Wendy's property. They're planning to reuse the current building, kind of reconfigure the existing site and then change it to a Dunkin' Donuts where they drop. And so, as part of that, they don't have the dimensions to have the parking, to meet the parking setbacks, the existing building is within the front setback. And then the drive aisle widths are gonna be reduced down to ten feet when twelve feet is required.
Do they, excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, sorry, I was just trying to get fixed, is this the Cook hat, what location is this?
Is the payday or...
It used to be the old Wendy's.
Yeah. So, they've got, they've got an interior go inside area or is it, it's drive through own?
Yeah, you scroll down. Is there another one more? Zoom up just a little. So, they have, they're required to have the bypass lane, so this is the current entrance and the current exit, so they'll come in, here's the bypass lane going around.
Okay.
These numbers mark the spots, you're supposed to have six spots from the order board pack that's queuing. Their order board's here, so they accomplish those six and they're supposed to have three from the order board to the window.
Okay.
So, they can hold ten cars in a queue.
Okay.
It's a little tight here, but this area meets the code. If there's a car right here, there probably be an issue with this car backing out, but the pinch point is right here, it's ten feet, so the car that's in this curve that's turning, you have to assume that they're all the way hugging the curve or else something's not gonna be able to get around.
Okay.
And then there also might be some issues with them taking deliveries from eighteen wheelers, of how that eighteen wheeler would get in there, get out, whether it's backing up on Highway twelve or doing some other maneuver that could cause problems.
Can it make the turn?
I haven't seen any turn rates with a truck yet. This hasn't gone through full site letter view, they went through reapplication.
So, this is just...
And there's some issues that came up during the reapplication.
Okay.
Are they using that entire building for a donut shop?
That's what they're planning.
Yeah, Dunkin', it's Dunkin' Donuts.
If the building were not there and if, that's the biggest site constraint, if it was a smaller building that was put on the site, I think it would be easier to come.
Okay, but BOAA did pass it unanimously.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, and, oh, I'm sorry, the last one's not yours, the last one is ours. Okay, and this is the public hearing and consideration to amend the city of Starkville Code of Ordnance. This is the parking and we have gone through this, I've had, we've seen no changes from the last time we did it to now. So, now, in the package, you should have the red line copy as well as a clean copy. And this just allows us to have the broadest opportunity for whatever methodology we want to use for parking in the city, whether it's pay for parking or it's the two-hour parking, it just clarifies things that were previously in some measure of contention or not absolutely clear, so.
Mayor, will we be taking up the specific parking, pay parking thing?
Alderman Carver has put that on the agenda under Board Business, which is, he's asking for consideration of rescinding it, so.
Well, I mean, and that, hopefully, we'll get into a general conversation about if we feel the need within Mercer's down there to continue modification that might be made to it to allow it to be better and from, I know now, probably everybody knows by the time when it's rolled out.
I think everybody knows by it now.
Right.
There's somebody.
But things like, in Oxford and in Auburn, Alabama, they have this, but they have kiosks. And so, if you're an old head like me and you want to go put a credit card in or something like that, you can find one out there in the street or something. And I mean, some optional of just using a mobile app, you know, because I've heard a lot, a lot, I mean, I don't go soliciting stuff, I'm not on social media, so I'm not out there asking for feedback from, what they call it, when you get in a circle, or your echo chamber, I'm not. If it was walking me to say, "I'm not going back down there because I just, I don't have an app, I'm not gonna go to patrol," that kind of thing. And so, if, to the extent that maybe somebody that's not comfortable with getting an app on their iPhone, someone would walk up to a kiosk, I went to see Ole Miss and Mississippi State play baseball.
We heard.
And you lost.
And it was a good ballgame, the only, the seats were incredible.
And you lost.
The venue's incredible, I would say it's an incredible venue too. But parked in a, and they'd supper on Square and they'd park in a, behind that big nice, what is it, Nielsen clothing store, in a public parking thing, and there was a kiosk in there and I would put my credit card in and told them how my loan wouldn't pay and put my tag number and I moved on. If it'd been an app thing, we'd just moved on, tried to go where we could find a parking place, you know.
Not to push back, because I understand what you're saying, but you can use the flip phone and call the number, there is that option. So, but, but if this does not get rescinded on Tuesday, Wednesday, we have green paint, I'm gonna order bigger signs and obviously, we'll go forward with the flyer and the utilities, you know, envelope for, just like we did for the recycling stuff.
Push cards for the retail.
And we, and push cards are in the mail. They tell me they're in the mail, coming to me. And so, yes, we've got all of those things that we're gonna circle back on and provide additional information.
Green paint delineate where you have free parking starts and the pay parking.
Yes.
And now, in Oxford, on some of those side streets going off Square, they have meters. And they have a double meter, probably a pole with double meter.
Well, let's talk about that for a second, because we looked at meters back, you know, how many years ago, we looked at meters and one of the problems you've got is that we don't have electricity there, for one. And the sidewalks are narrow, so that if you put meters there, then you're creating a problem with your passage of your sidewalks, which are already narrower than they should be by current standards. So, that was, that was part of the reason that we went through the process of waiting until there was something other than meters in order to do this. And again, because it was the Cotton District, we felt like people who frequented the Cotton District would be much more inclined to be comfortable with an app in the phone. So, that was kind of the methodology and the thought process that went with all that. But clearly, it's been interesting.
We could, we could, might possibly look at what, the location of two to three kiosks and just put in and...
There may be some opportunities to do that and we can certainly explore that as well. So, anyway, that's, go ahead, I'm sorry. No, 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 you're all right.
And never lose sight of the fact that there is free parking in those areas too. So, if somebody wants to go there and not pay, can drive around to like a...
And on a weekend, we don't have a safe parking on the weekends.
Between eight PM and eight AM, it's free, on holidays and weekends, it's free.
But I just, I think I said something about this, but I have heard, listened to people through the years who are retail and people that develop retail say that if you make, you gotta make shopping easy, you better have an incredible product if you want people to go out and wave and go to a lot of trouble to buy something from you. And if your stuff is just like, you know, reg-, you know, good, but red, touch stuff, you gotta make it where people can park and easy or they'll just go where the big parking lots are and where it's convenient.
Well, they won't even do that, we can't get them to park in the parking lot behind Stark Cafe.
But I mean, it's just, it's a thing like you gotta, that's the way retail, a lot of it works and it's, it's not fair, but it's just gonna, it's the way it is.
Right. Well, and those are all public hearings, y'all, so there's nothing we can do with those in terms of... those in terms of consent. The next item under Mayor's Business, and we were trying to put that right on the heels of this one, because it is the fine and the fee schedule that goes with that. So this is consideration of adopting the updated and consolidated fee schedule. There is nothing here that is new. There is no increase in pricing. There is simply consolidation so that it will be on the website and easy to access. So we've got courts, we've got police, we've got building, the rental housing code, we've got city clerk. So we've got all manner of the things that we charge that are now in one consolidated
Nothing new.
document. Nothing, well, other than we've, obviously, the rental housing thing is in there, but we had already-
Nothing that we've not already acted on.
Yes, that's correct. We updated, the only thing we really updated is the two-hour parking, because right now we've got a policy. It wasn't a code. It wasn't a code. It wasn't an ordinance. But we have a board order that says that the $25 is there, but it's not out there, so it's well-known. So this allows us to actually put that in a document, so.
And one more thing, Mayor, about parking ordinance, because I could hear this question coming up Tuesday night. The parking ordinance, as revised in your packets, allows you guys to continue paid parking, do away with paid parking, change paid parking, whatever you want to do with it.
Yeah.
Those are two separate and distinct things.
Separate.
So my strong recommendation is to approve the ordinance, and then you all do whatever you want to with parking.
Right. And if, you know, the majority, large majority, don't want to continue it, then, you know, if some board in the future wants to, then the ordinance doesn't have to then be revised. So it does allow for maximum latitude, and that was part of the goal.
Can we put this on consent?
We can, and we can certainly do that, see if everybody's willing to move forward. Again, because it's nothing new, that should be, should be okay. The next one is consideration of approving the interlocal tap grant. This is the one where we partnered with MSU for going from 182 all the way around to College View. I think Mr. Kemp, didn't you present this, didn't we have this at a work session as a discussion point?
I believe so.
I think we did, yes. So this is just to, for us to enter into the interlocal with MSU to move forward with this as they, as they go through the process. So can we, can we do consent on that one?
Consent.
Okay. Advertising for proposals for redistricting. Now that we are annexed in, we can move forward with that and see. I expect that GTPDD and probably Mr. Slaughter will be probably giving us proposals for that.
Mayor, I welcome all of those options.
Well, good. They'll be happy to be there. Excellent. Well, we'll see how that works out.
I don't know if you can keep them all.
Yeah, we'll see. But may very well. But I would think consent for that one? Any issues? And then consideration of rescinding the eighth resolution relating to the response to the COVID pandemic. Because we have now, by CDC standards, gone into an endemic stage, I felt like now is the time to move, remove the eighth resolution by rescinding it, as well as the fact that we have now removed, you know, there are no mask mandates any longer, and the governor has basically said that we cannot do anything with the $75 surcharge. So all of those elements just dictate that we ought to go ahead and rescind that eighth resolution. I'm assuming, you're looking at me, is there something I needed to do differently about that?
No, the only thing is when you said governor, it's legislation.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so statutory mandate.
Yes, it is now for that, yeah, absolutely. But it wasn't an executive order, was it? It was legislation. Okay, I misspoke. I'm sorry.
Consent.
Thank you. Okay. And then consideration of rescinding the paid parking, I would suggest not consent for that, so, okay. We have nothing for the airport. Then we've got a final plat. Mr. Havilan, anything particular about this final plat?
It's a minor subdivision, so it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, we have consented these items before because nobody is objecting to it.
We consented every minor plat.
Yeah, okay. Any issues with consent on that one? Okay. Under engineering, we have accepting a low bid from Killen Contractors in the amount of $1,581, and this is the off-quarter electric project. Mr. Kemp was proud because he came in, this was the last bid that came in, and he came in-
Under.
Under. That's right. So, you know, if we're going to have one that we could be smiling about, this would be, it would be this one.
Really excited.
So how much was, how much do we expect it to come in at?
Don't tell me.
Well, he only gave them about $40,000.
That's okay. We'll take $40,000.
Yeah, right.
But the second lowest bidder was about $500,000 higher.
Okay. All right. Awesome. So that would seem to me to be, and this, and this is part of the build grant project.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. So consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. Accepting the low bid from Falcon for the 2022 street improvement projects, and we are comfortable with that, with their bid?
Yes, ma'am. It actually came in under this, but-
Really?
Really.
See? Okay. Any amount is better than-
How many bids did you have?
Two. And we also, also got a request from Alderman, a request involving dating to get the limestone bid.
Yeah.
And we, we had to discard that because it was about 30% higher.
But now we know.
Sorry.
But we did get the pricing, so we can utilize that for future planning purposes.
Good.
If we start thinking about corridor works and major.
Something else, too, Mr. Kemp, I mentioned this, is if we know that the life of a street is extended with that type of asphalt X, then we may, may justify the additional front-end capital cost if you're going to get it on sale on the back end and lock the street, because I test it on, I mean, it's good asphalt, superior asphalt.
Okay. Consent for that one? Consideration of approval of the revised bill grant agreement. Would you like to share a little bit of that?
Yes. This is, so every time you enter into the new phase or get ready to start into a new phase and update the grant agreement, and this is setting us up to enter into the on corridor portion, which we're hoping to build, to bid in the next two months or so. So it's basically populating updated cost estimates and updated schedule into that. And so this potentially will be the last grant agreement revision or addition we need to make in this project.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Consent for that one?
Let me ask a quick question.
Yeah.
So will people start to see construction when?
So AT&amp;T is currently working on the corridor, relocating their lines.
And they're very visible out there, by the way, in case you haven't driven by it.
All the work that's going on down there is AT&amp;T. We're not really got a whole lot to do with that. But you'll start seeing the off corridor that approved the low bid of this, have to order materials, get them delivered. So I think in the next two to three months, we'll start seeing some activity. That will be adjacent to, not on Highway 182, so it'll be more up Jackson Street here and kind of in the perimeter, around that general vicinity, so we can offload some of the distribution services.
And as we offload them, we'll be seeing some of those poles come down?
The poles on 182 will come down, but those will probably be pretty close to the end.
Oh, will they?
Still have a lot of telecommunication up there, past out, AT&amp;T, and all those points in connection.
Okay. Okay. Well, I was hoping as we offload it, we might be going to take some of those down.
Something visual.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Mr. Kemp, do we have general contractor on the build grant, or do we just, or we get component, take component parts and we're managing it? What is, how, is that thing is constructed? How will that be done?
So there's two principal, well, three principal components. One, the AT&amp;T work is being done by them and their own contract. So we had some input on that, but they're managing that, I'm sure. The off corridor portion is actually going to be through a mechanism called a utility agreement, and that arrangement is for, lived between city of Starble and Starble Utilities, and Starble Utilities is actually going to execute that construction. So the bid today is going to be with Starble Utilities.
I will oversee that.
We will oversee and execute that contract. The on corridor, which is the visible portion of the runway-
Paving, solid.
That's the paving, removal of the lines, putting up the tall transmission towers. That will be in a separate construction contract managed by the city, and it will be bid out, and it'll be a competitive bid, so it'll be a contractor.
Well, utilities are a straight part. Who will manage that? I mean, who will oversee that?
Probably the engineering department.
Once we transition away, we're making him hang on to the predominant near-term part of it. We'll transition away.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. You bet. Okay, and so claim stock at no, fire department, this is travel. Now we're getting to the, you know, the kind of basics.
Consent.
Yeah, consent for these, and so fire department, travel, and then we have a number of folks to hire. I think one of the things, if we're consent for most of those, if there's, unless there's a question with some of those, we have a driver in sanitation, we have a maintenance worker in sanitation and whose name pronunciation someone will get me at some point in time. And then we have wastewater operator, part-time positions in, at the airport, which is converting two part-time into one full-time. Radio operator dispatcher, and then interim system engineer, the part-time custodian, and then the advertising for part-time custodian shared between two departments, which I think we had talked about during the budget session. So unless, any issues with that? We can put those on consent? No concerns there? Okay. Ms. Harden, you get all those? Then we have one low quote for $8,100 from Howard Technologies for yearly renewal of antivirus, and that's Mr. Clements. Is that a, is that an up from before because of the utilities department addition, right?
It is, as they're participating in it, so it basically increases the price. It's the same product we've used in the past.
And we are good with them, so that would be on an annualized basis?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Consent for that one? Any issues? Okay. And then here's, here's the one that breaks my heart.
I'm seeing my shoulders sag.
Yeah, it breaks my heart. So the contract, the cement rationing is putting us at a point where now they are asking for additional time, 175 days, due to the supply issue, which none of us have any control over. But we are hopeful that those things will change. Circumstances will allow us to get in a queue that gives us enough cement to do what we want to do and put us back in a timeline that is more palatable for this year, because that means four, four tournaments won't make. But we are in a position where we need to do this. I don't see that we have an option. So if, I'll be happy to make that announcement as a part of what we do on Tuesday night, but if we want to put it on consent, that I don't think we have, it's not like we have a choice about the whole thing, so. Consent for that? And I'll make, I'll make that a point while we're, when we're in the meeting. And then Mr. Smiley has, has analyzed his situation for the sanitation department and would like to go back to a uniform service. And these folks are, I'm not seeing the, oh, there it is, UniFirst. Yeah, thank you. By UniFirst. So you're comfortable that that arrangement is where you want to go, right?
Yes.
Okay. And Ms. Harden, any issues with any of that from the city clerk's standpoint?
I was just, I sent just the brief.
Yeah. Have you had a chance to look at it yet?
I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. Kingly yesterday.
Okay. All right. Well, I-
I will. I'm between Tuesday. If we see-
Okay. If we see any issues, we can fix it. Okay. All right. So consent for that one? Any issues from them?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Exactly how many employees does that cover?
In code, right now, we have hardly any.
Okay.
And it does cover all of them?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And under utilities, we have, all right, Mr. Kemp, I'm going to let you, no, wait a minute. This is, this is just the bonds, right? So this is the bond.
This is the standard document that bond council gives us, and government consultants gives us, which frees government consultants up to test the market.
Okay. And that's the $7 million that we authorized.
Pre-approved.
Yeah.
Pre-authorized.
Yeah, pre-authorized at the last board meeting. So consent for that one? Any issues? Authorization to advertise for bids for the rehab of the sanitary sewer collection system, that is our Green Oaks and our Rolling Hills neighborhood. Anything about that that you want to add to that?
We just put those two projects together to try to get in the concrete scale. This is actually just a lining portion of that contract.
Okay. Nothing special about that, so consent for that, unless someone says otherwise. Authorization to initiate the task order with seven states, and that is the one that the contract has been going back and forth and back and forth with seven states, and you're now comfortable?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay.
When we resolved that a while back. This is just a task order to kick it off.
Okay. All right. You still good with that? Okay. Consent for that one? Authorization to declare excavators as surplus and advertise for on gov deals, so consent for that. Except the lowest quote for central pipe, for sewer pipe, for College View sewer point repair, and that is the, is that Mr. Guyton's project? Okay. And we're looking at what? Do you say six weeks, eight weeks out?
I have one.
Have we looked at that?
I think this one is six weeks.
Six weeks out? Okay. So we're having trouble getting pipe and that sort of thing in a timely manner, so whatever we order now is-
This one's the designated itself.
Oh, okay.
Maybe it's the manholes that were six weeks.
Okay.
And those were less than $5,000, so we did.
Okay.
We did authorization.
Okay. So we can go consent with that one. And then authorization to advertise for bids for replacing the 24-inch force main at the wastewater treatment plant, which we did the emergency repair on a month or so ago. So consent for that one. And personnel items will be what they are. So, anything else? Anybody else? All right. Thank you, everyone. It's a nice day. I hope everybody has a great weekend, except for Sunday. I think it's going to rain, but it should be beautiful tomorrow, so thank you. Have a good weekend.
It was Bullloss Place, we knew.
Missouri.
Missouri. Yeah, Missouri.